Good morning. Welcome to the April 7th, 2016 zoning board of adjustment meeting. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda number you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. At this time, we'd like to ask anybody to either silence or turn off their cell phones. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway. The public hearing on item number one for zoning board of adjustment, approval of March 10 meeting minutes is now open. Linda made the motion to approve the minutes. Karen seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two.
Item number two is 16 VA 002, a request to reduce the minimum required side yard setback for a two-story structure from 12 feet to seven and a half feet. Seven and a half feet is the existing setback to the structure. Building permit that was issued in 1980s showed an eight-foot setback, so it's currently non-conforming. Let me take you through some slides to start. Property is located at 3001 Stockade Drive. So that's the golf course, the green to the east here. Property is owned low-density residential district. View of the property, there's a single-family dwelling located on it. It's two-story with an attached garage. It's on it at an angle and from a point here, it's seven and a half feet from the property line. And the applicant is proposing to construct a addition above the garage. Future land use shows it as a low-density neighborhood in the area. And Stockade Drive is a collector's street on the city's major street plan, requiring 25-foot front yard setback. Here we have showing the seven-and-a-half-foot existing setback to the corner. Elevation showing the proposed addition. Elevation submitted by the applicant. That's first floor, and then right here, new master closet and den being the additions above the garage. Picture of the property, see where the addition would go. This is to the south, across the street, see the golf course back there, looking south on Stockade. Properties to the east as well, looking more to the northeast, and looking north along Stockade. And this is the separation between the structure to the, or north of the, where the addition would go up here. The staff recommends that the requested variance be denied. However, for the existing setback and the existing use on the property, staff does recommend that the seven-and-a-half-foot setback be approved for the, what's existing there today, because reasonable use of the land exists. The applicant's here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, legislature.
Oh, sorry, one more thing. If you do have, decide to recommend to approve, there is a stipulation of approval that we've put down, which they have submitted a home occupation certificate, so that first stipulation isn't needed anymore. And the second one being for the fire sprinkler protection, and that should read "or," being constructed with approved fire-resistant materials.
We have a speaker request from Michael Hewitt.
Hi, I'm Michael Hewitt. I'm the homeowner. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and go through a few points as to why I applied for this variance and think that it should be approved. And just over the next few minutes, hopefully, I can show you that it's been a hardship for us to not have an in-home office. The neighbors feel that this is a nice addition. That geographically, we have a unique situation that necessitates this variance to be for our addition. That it also doesn't go out of the current footprint, and that it's reasonable use of land dictated both by us and our neighbors. So if you guys would flip to page one of the brochure. So this is just kind of a floor plan. If you look at the floor plan, what we're proposing to do again, as you saw, is add an office. Currently, we have an office which we, or a desk, I should say, which we use for our small business, and then we also use it for personal use. That's in our master bedroom. That's been somewhat of an organizational nightmare for us, and it certainly has been a hardship to not have an in-home office, so that's what we're trying to add. The first thing I also want to point out is you can see that this new office, the garage is 22-foot deep. This only sits on the back portion of the garage. It's only 10 feet deep. And the way that our house sits also, it's just the back corner that is close to the lot line. The rest of it rapidly moves away from the lot line because of the unique geographical situation. So if you'd flipped to page two, I added this in here just to show that it's not out of the ordinary for these types of things to happen in our neighborhood. This summer, our neighbors had the exact same situation where they wanted to build a two-story structure and did not meet setback requirements. That variance was approved this summer, and that house looks great, and all the neighbors are happy with that. If you'd flipped to page three, so this is, again, an aerial photo with our house being the lower house and the garage being closest to the street. Two things I wanted to point out is, you can see on Stockade, our house is positioned where the road curves quite a bit. When they built our house, for aesthetic reasons, they put it parallel to the road. That made this kind of geographical situation where our house is crooked on the lot line. So that makes the very back corner close to the lot line, but that really is the only part of the house that's close to the lot line. And, so if you had flipped to page four, this kind of shows that from a street view, the closest part our house is to the neighbor's house is 22 feet, but it rapidly comes away from the lot line because it's crooked on the lot, so that in the front, it's 28 feet. So aesthetically, when you drive by our house, it appears, or that there's plenty of space between the two houses. If you flipped to page five, so this is kind of our current house. This is a picture of what we would like the house to look like in the future. As you can see, that this remodel project positively adds to our neighborhood. We've talked with all of the neighbors, and they have only given positive feedback about it. We've sent letters, and again, have only gotten verbal positive feedback from our closest neighbors. So in summary, I just want to, five points. Again, you know, this has been a hardship for us to not have an in-home office, both for personal and occupational use. We do have an occupational certificate on file with the city. Number two, the neighbors feel that this is a nice addition and in no way is contrary to public interest. Number three, we have a unique geographical situation where our house sits crooked on the lot line, creating this issue. Number four, the addition does not currently go outside of our current footprint. It doesn't increase the square footage of our roof. And, and number five, so this is reasonable use of land, both dictated by how we feel that it is, and then we also, our neighbors feel it is too, just from talking with them. So thank you for your time and consideration of this variance.
Thank you. I've got a light up from Galen.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't see a problem with this myself. I'm gonna get the ball rolling here. It's, like you say, it's, the house is oriented, parallel to the street, and that, I can see what you're saying. There's really no other place to expand unless you're off of your back. Looks like you're gonna expand off of the backyard and off of bedroom two or something like that. So I don't see it being a problem, you have the buy-in from the neighbors. So I'd be tempted just to move to approve this with, I know I have to cite a reason, so let's go. I think we have to say it's in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, so that, that criteria.
Okay, Galen made the motion. Steve seconded.
I think our only options are to approve or not to approve. Is that correct? Is there any comment from the fire department regarding this?
Mr. Chairman?
Tim?
Thank you. You know, we actually support this type of thing with the provisions utilizing the residential fire sprinkler protection and the appropriate materials for the exterior of the home itself. Setbacks or reduced setbacks are always a problem under fire circumstances, but there are tools in our toolbox to allow us to support that. And I think this is a reasonable, reasonable one to work with, so.
Just a follow-up real quick.
Sure.
So, Mr. Billings, what you're saying is, if this variance was approved, then that type of situation would be addressed during building permit review?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to put you folks on notice that in the project report, it is recommended that if you should approve it, and Galen did identify his rationale, that it be done so with a stipulation that, as a part of that building permit, that fire suppression consideration be brought forward. So we would ask the motion maker to include that in his motion.
So moved.
Steve, you okay?
Yep.
Okay. Motion maker and second are okay with that? Andy? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I always struggle with this because, to me, there is, there's reasonable use of the land. They could expand to the back. I mean, it's not like they're locked in. They've got plenty of room back there. But I also look at, at the neighbors that they have not indicated that they dislike the idea. And if it turns out, the way it's, way they've got it with the new roof line and stuff, it does kind of fit in better, I think, with the neighborhood out there. So I do struggle with that. I have a quick question, and they've got a home occupation, you have a home occupation. Does that mean you just have your office there, or do you actually have clients that come in and?
No, no, so we have a commercial space on the west side that we run the business out of, but my wife does a lot of just class planning at our house, so there's no retail and nothing like that.
Okay, that was my question. I haven't decided yet which way to go, but, thank you.
Still have a light up from planning staff. Are you? Perfect. Any other comments from the commission on this? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion from Galen to approve with the stipulation for the fire sprinkler considerations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Look for a motion to adjourn the zoning board of adjustment. Steve made the motion.
Second.
Andy seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
They are adjourned from zoning. Now we'll commence with the Rapid City Planning Commission. Sorry. Too many papers. We'll start the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting for April 7th, 2016. Again, if anybody wants to speak on an item on the planning commission agenda, please grab a speaker request form and fill it out to the left of the dais. We'll start with the consent calendar. Items one through 14 have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. Findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item four, 16 PD 011. Item five, 16 PD 014. Item 12, 16 UR 005. The Rapid City Planning Commission's actions on these items are final unless any party appeals that decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the community planning and development services department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items, one through 14, staff would like removed?
Yes, items six and seven, please.
Okay. Any items one through 14, then any audience member would like removed? And any items that the, any planning commissioners would like removed, one through 14? Motion was made by Steve and seconded by Linda to approve items one through 14, with the exception of six and seven. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Mr. Chair, if we could take items six and seven together, please. The applicant has requested that these two items be continued to your April 21st planning commission meeting, and that would be our recommendation.
Karen made the motion to continue items six and seven to April 21st. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Still catching up here. Item 15.
Item 15 is a major amendment to plan development to expand an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a casino. This was continued from the previous planning commission meeting at the applicant's request, so they could be at this meeting and address any concerns. Property is located at 1808 Mount Rushmore Road. Property is owned general commercial district with a planned development. Existing structure on the property, parking lot on this side was constructed, on the east side was constructed in the last couple of years. Portion of the building is currently the Rushmore Casino, and then previously on the south side, it was a Quiznos, which has closed, so the applicant's proposing to expand into that existing space. Future land use property is urban neighborhood, and Mount Rushmore Road is identified as a revitalization corridor. It's also identified as a principal arterial street on city's major street plan. Here we have the layout. There is an existing fence along the sea's property line, providing screening as well as landscaping that's, that's along there to the residential uses to the east. The existing building shows the layout of the proposed casino expansion. Proposed signage on the site, this is an existing sign. This right here is an existing billboard sign that'll also be staying. The sign which you can see right back here, I believe, that was a Quizno sign, and one of the stipulations which has changed on this application is that, once they do get the sign package through historic review, that the proposed sign which is going to be removed, be removed. Signage on the building that's proposed, again, stipulation states that the historic sign board has to review and approve this proposed signage before they can get a sign permit. View of the existing building, you can see the old Quiznos used to be there. Looking across to the west, Mount Rushmore Road, this is the proposed sign which will be removed, looking south on Mount Rushmore Road, and to the north. Kitty Corner is park, and then behind that is a school. This is an existing on-sale liquor use location. This is looking east along, I believe that's St. Andrew Street, at the residential located there. We can see the fence here, which is already in place. And looking at the rest of that and the parking that they do have. We did receive some comments from the neighbors about issues with drinking in the, in the area. Before you on the dais is a handout from the police department showing the location of on-sale and off-sale liquor uses, as well as police calls in the area. If you do have specific questions regarding that, I have you directed to Carla. Staff is recommending that the major amendment be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report, and the applicant is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Got a speaker request from Troy Erickson.
Morning. I'm Troy Erickson with MGL Company. I'm the applicant. I think I'll just wait and see if there's any questions. As we bought this property, we just bought this property in January, and right now, it has two alcohol licenses here, and there are 20 lottery machines. As Quiznos closed down, we bought all the equipment from Quiznos. We bought the property to the east, put the parking lot in, corrected the drainage. The next phase with the Quiznos sign leaving and changing the front of the building, we're gonna change curb cuts with the reconstruction of Rushmore Road, so all the curb cuts are gonna change. And our plan is to just move another license into here so we can have 30 lottery machines. A year and a half ago, we went from 10 to 20 and moved a second license to this property. And I went back from year to year, and actually, we sold less beer, three less per day, when we went from 10 machines to 20. Part of the state regulation, for each 10 lottery machines, you need to have a malt beverage or liquor license. Our plan is to move another license in here to have the 30 machines. Doesn't necessarily mean we're gonna sell any more beer at the property. We'll just have the ability to have 30 lottery machines instead of 20. And the license that we're moving is actually moving down the street from the old Happy Jack's on Rushmore, or maybe you guys had seen it before. It used to be called Eighth Street Casino, across from the old Regency. I can show you a picture.
If you want, pass it out.
That location, we're gonna close, and actually, we have, so that license will move down the street to this new site. And I do have a person, two people that want to buy that building. It's under contract right now with Marco's Pizza to buy that building, and they're gonna use it for a carry-out and delivery site. And so, I guess I'll just wait. If there's any other questions, I'll be available.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Steve?
Move to approve.
Steve made the motion to approve. Linda seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Number 16 is an ordinance amendment to amend certain provisions concerning digital signs, signs credits, and spacing of off-premises signs by amending the sign code, as was, I attached a memo to the agenda which explained the background for these changes. They come out of a settlement agreement with Lamar related to a long-time lawsuit with them. The changes are limited to what council has already committed to in the settlement agreement. That agreement was approved by council at the beginning of March, I believe. I can take any questions, if there are any, from the commission.
Amanda has a light up on this. Do you have any?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I just ask, would you mind just giving a brief overview of what those changes were? There were two pertinent changes, and just so that the public and the planning commission is aware and on record, please.
Certainly. The first change is removing the digital billboard ban, which this commission has dealt with in the past, when we've had some requests from Lamar and Epic, both for digital signs. That was an initiative passed by the voters in 2011 and litigated in federal court. Ultimately, Judge Vikin found that that ban, a flat ban on digital signs was in violation of state law. And, but yet, the provision has remained in our sign code. That is one of the pieces that's being removed here. I'm sure you remember that even though that's been in the sign code, this group has approved digital signs in a few cases, in light of the decision by Judge Vikin that the ban itself was illegal. The second change is to reduce, no, excuse me, expand, to some extent, the spacing between digital, or between off-premise signs. The change would, the minimum radial distance between off-premises signs is going from 1,500, is going from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet, so expanding that to some extent, and increasing the minimum linear distance between off-premises signs along the same roadway from 1,500 feet to 2,000 feet. Those were negotiated with Lamar as part of the settlement agreement, and it was part of the lawsuit as well. The final thing that's being changed, well, the major, the final, primary thing that's being changed is, there's a, there's a 20-year timeframe for sign credits. Billboard companies can get sign credits to put up new billboards by removing old billboards. It's an incentive system to take, take down old ones and, and replace them with better ones that are compliant with our sign code. There was a sunset provision of 20 years, saying that those sign credits were only valid for 20 years. However, in this case, Lamar had, had a bunch of sign credits before the initiative was passed in 2011, and they were claiming, and we agreed honestly, and as part of the lawsuit, that that 20-year limit shouldn't apply to sign, to sign credits that they obtained before we changed, before we added that sunset provision. So the change in the code makes that clear. The final thing that the code has changed is that in approving conditionally used permits for off-premise signs, I added language that this board can consider the comp plan. And that's something that's come up, to some extent, within, with on-premise signs in the, in recent history. But because that's been an issue as to how much the comp plan can figure into the court, into the commission's decision, I did add that into the off-premise sign code that we are, that we're changing today. So that's maybe more lengthy than you wanted, Amanda, but that's...
No, that was perfect, thank you. And then just a couple other points that I just want, no, that was perfect. You summarized it very well. But a couple of the other points, too, if my memory serves me correctly, the planning commission itself wanted the city council to address this ordinance, and at the time, the city council wanted to wait until the lawsuits were done before we could really get a good direction on where we wanted to go with this. And based on the negotiations, because even though the spacing, the linear feet and the circular spacing appears that it is being enlarged, it is a negotiated because they actually wanted more, and we backed off. And so, this was, this was like a really good compromise, and I think it still gives the city and the planning commission some really good material to consider off-premise signs going forward. And I think it's good for our city. But thank you, that was a perfect explanation. I wanted to make sure that... I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the changes that were occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a comment and then I want to ask Carla a question. My comment is, I guess that I'm disappointed that the citizens can vote and make a decision to not have so many billboards and not have the electronic ones and that because laws that are in place that reverses that, I'm disappointed that we locally can't make our own decisions and stick by them. So that's my comment. My question then goes back to the other, the last comment that you made as far as the changes, Carla. So what you're saying is if we see a billboard or either on premise or off premise sign that comes forward through a conditional use permit or a planned development, I would assume, that we can still make changes to that? Can we, we can make a change as far as the size is concerned, those kinds of things? But can we actually say, no, we don't want that sign on there through that conditional use permit and planned development?
Well, this would only apply to off premise signs. We didn't make any changes to the on premise sign provision as part of this change. But there's several criteria to consider when approving off premise signs. And all I did was add the comp plan as one of those criteria. So I think there's about 12 criteria that you can consider, including the spacing, the density, the height, location to major community centers, other things too. But all I did was add the comp plan. So that can be one of the things that's considered in approving or denying or setting limits on off premise signage.
Okay, so if the comp plan states on this corridor, we don't want any off premise signs that are LED or digital, we can say no. Is that correct? That we don't want?
I think you could have said no before, but now, now we have that reference to the comp plan, so that gives you some more support for doing so.
Great, thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, I got to be honest, was there a motion on the floor? I thought so. All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Item 17. Kim is abstaining from this item and which jogs my memory. She also abstained from number two on zoning board of adjustment. She did not vote on that. I just failed to note it.
I'll be abstaining from this as well, Mr. Chair.
And Andy is abstaining from number 17.
Item number 17 is an initial plan development for the expansion of West Hills Village located along 5th Street with Texas Street at the north and Nebraska Street on the south. Here we have zoning map. Those areas that are yellow on the east and on the south. We recently saw two rezone applications to rezone those from low density to medium density residential district and those were approved. This shows the existing facility and we've got some single, existing single family homes along Freedom Court, Texas Street, 5th Street, and Nebraska. The initial plan development is sort of the conceptual, this is what we were proposing to do. One of the things we're going to approve is having multiple primary structures, meaning the West Hills Village assisted living facility and the single family homes on a single property should they plant in the future to make this all one lot instead of multiple lots until such time as they're prepared to construct the additions. Future land use, it's a mix of mostly urban neighborhood but also some low density neighborhood. 5th Street is identified as a principal arterial street. Here we have the conceptual plan. It's a three-phase plan. Phase one is construction of the expansion of the assisted living facility on the east side with space for 35 to 50 residents. There's also underground parking which is accessed on the east side of the building. Phase two is the addition of parking on the northwest side and as well as this parking over here on the south side. And phase three is the construction of three twin home units along 5th Street and Nebraska Close up of the proposed assisted care addition. Notice the setback, provided here to the adjacent residential, it's greater than what's required. They're proposing a 35-foot height, one story with a walkout basement. The walkout being on this south side of the proposed structure. They also say that the proposed addition will be residential in character. As part of the initial, we can put stipulations addressing different concerns that we have. Staff identified a number of concerns that need to be addressed upon submittal of a final plan development. Those include drainage. A conceptual drainage plan has been submitted. It identifies one treatment pond and four water quality manholes as well as additional storm sewer pipes, inlets, and grading as needed. So the conceptual plan has been submitted showing what proposed improvements could be done with drainage. We know that that's a major concern the neighborhood has had, is drainage. So even as a stipulation of approval, having that master drainage plan, giving a lot more detailed calculations, needs to be submitted with the final plan development. Another issue is the traffic. And some of the issues being, at least, you know, one of the benefits is, is that no vehicular traffic is proposed from Freedom Court, which means you're not going to get a lot of traffic. It'll be mainly on Texas Street and Nebraska Street. And even on Nebraska Street, it's the parking lot for the facility and the twin homes. And let me go back to previous page so we can get a better idea of what I'm talking about. So not having traffic coming up here. One of the issues we did see though is that having two proposed access points along Texas Street, either one of them needs to be removed or an exception needs to be obtained from the infrastructure design criteria manual as well as the approach location on 5th Street. That either needs to be removed or an exception obtained. Another issue identified was public utilities. As far as capacity and whether the development in the area can deal with the increased capacity in water and sewer, that's something that will need submitted upon a final plan development application. And then residential character of the proposed addition. One of the concerns we've heard from the neighbors is that we've got the parking lot here along Texas Street and you've got some single family homes located on the north side of the street and as well as along this east side. And what we're looking for is an elevation showing the mass of that proposed structure as well as how it's going to be residential in character. A lighting plan showing that the proposed lighting for the addition in this parking lot won't intrude on the residential neighborhood. And a landscaping plan showing how they're going to screen this parking lot and the structure if it's needed from the residential properties to the north and the east. Again, this is a conceptual initial plan development, a conceptual plan. There are about 12 stipulations of approval for the additional information we're going to need upon submittal of a final plan development. Staff is recommending that the initial plan development be approved and with stipulations noted in the staff report. This is the conceptual drainage plan that was submitted. We'll need something that is the master drainage plan, which is, I believe, underway. Sign is posted on the property. This is looking at West Hills Village from the corner of 5th and Texas. I believe this is down on Nebraska, looking at some of the single family homes that are existing, which they're asking for approval to remain until the expansion is phased, this would be in phase three. Looking east along Nebraska Street and looking west along Nebraska, other facilities in the area. Again, this being a great location for a retirement community with Rapid City Regional Hospital located north along 5th Street and as well as other social services that may be needed for this special population. Looking south along 5th Street. This is back at Texas, looking to the west. There are some existing apartments closer to where the main existing facility is. And then this is looking at where the proposed expansion would be, the area that it would be in along Texas Street. And you can see the residential, the existing single family which will remain in place and why our concern with the look of the property, the look of the proposed structure and lighting and landscaping. These are the existing three-story structures currently located on that far east side of the property. So the addition will be 35 feet, but it'll be one story with that walkout basement. Again, the residential, this is looking at, from Freedom Court looking north. And I believe this one, there should be the pond in this area where this existing house is. And looking back towards the facility, the existing facility is going to be back in this area, looking to the north and west. And looking south along Freedom Court at the existing residential in the area. So if there are any questions for staff at this time, representative the applicant is here to speak to any questions and I believe we have some speaker request forms.
Yep, my screen went dead, so if you want to speak from up here, just flag me. I've got a speaker request from, oh, I haven't, Don Madge. Earning my income.
I have, I've lived in this area for a long time. I, as the picture showed, I live at the bottom of Freedom Court, so that would be looking north. I live on Centennial Street. I've lived there since 1988. I've witnessed growth of this facility and how it's just, just been moving and moving and moving. When I moved into this area and it was a great neighborhood and it still is. And I feel sorry for the people who are on, in that area who are being impact, impacted by this. I guess my question is if this facility wants to grow, and there's a need for this, I understand that, I get it. But if, why are they being able to destroy and block bust neighborhoods? I mean, it's just like Pac-Man going and gobbling up just homes and homes and homes. I'm just kind of wondering when it's going to come to mind. And if, if the need is to grow, which I totally understand, why don't they just get a parcel of land someplace where they can really expand instead of, instead of block busting neighborhoods? And I guess that's my only concern. I, I see what it looks like, I get it. But it's the expansion and when, when does it stop? I mean, is it just going to continue on? I mean, five years from now, is it going to be, we're going to, we're going to expand some more and then I'm going to be asked or somebody else is going to be asked or my neighbors down the street are going to be asked to move or sell? So I, I guess the question is block busting. Why, why, why are they being able to come into existing neighborhoods that have been there for a long time, being able to do that? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Also have a request from Susan Pasternak.
I'm Susan Pasternak. My husband Ed and I live at 106 Texas Street. We are across the street and two lots down from this proposed development. We do have some concerns. I'm kind of like the spokesman of the neighborhood because I will get up and speak. Okay, the map and things that we got after the last meeting, we got the mail out finally after the fact of some of the stuff. Okay, it shows the building in the underground parking. Okay, that main phase one is going to take over 84 open and garaged parking areas. Where are those people in those spots now that live in that residence going to park? We have that question. We'd like to know, have they had any thoughts on it? Okay, now, the water runoff. Being across the street, we're more concerned with the water running down the street. If anybody has ever traveled Texas during a rainstorm, not even a gully washer, you will see the water flowing like a river. We do not have storm sewers where it goes underground. The stuff on the south goes down around the corner, Arizona, Centennial, eventually it makes it to the drainage area way to the south. Ours on the north goes around the corner, down to Arizona, and then will go into the underground one on Anaconda that runs from the reservoir. The water runoff from more driveways and more parking areas will have to be dealt with. We've actually had a car moved that was on the street, across the street. It was moved 20 feet down the block by the water runoff. We've never had that much water runoff until currently. So it's coming from somewhere. Most of us have our downspouts aimed not out our driveways but on the ground where it's supposed to be, where it goes in. Okay, we're concerned about the runoff from a parking lot and more driveways. Also, the driveways, which the gentleman presented, they'll have to be an exception if there's two more driveways in there. The two driveways, they're proposed now. One is right next to Karen's house. The other one is right where Bader's bedrooms would have been. When you look across the street, those driveways are aimed right in someone's bedroom. Okay, and the two more drives, we have difficulty with the driveways there already. As we were informed by someone who we almost hit coming out of the main entrance, well, there's no stop sign. I don't have to stop. Well, it's a driveway. You don't have a stop sign at a driveway. Okay? But it is hard going down Texas Street. Since this has come about, there is less parking up around the main facility by employees. They are now, must be parking in the parking lot because there's less blocking the entrances and the lines of sight. So two more entrances with people coming out, particularly the one down at the bottom where it's an in and an out, I think is going to be a problem. Okay, now, infrastructure. The water and sewer lines there have been there for 40 years. That's basically how long those homes have been there. At least ours has, I know. Our water pressure is not the best. On Sunday morning at 6 o'clock in the morning, I can start a load of clothes. Just like that, my washer fills. Try it on a Sunday afternoon or around supper time, it takes forever. So there is an issue on our street in that area with water pressure. So any more expansion and more people using water, are we going to have even more problems? And the sewer system, can it handle more? In those four homes that are being demolished or removed on our street, I counted a maximum of 18 people in those four homes in the time we've lived there. Okay, you add 50 more people, say, in that one wing, where is... Okay, you add 50 more people, say, in that one wing, where is, the sewer is going to go? Is it going to come down Texas? The city is in maybe at least once a month, going down the manholes. I don't know what they're looking for or what they're cleaning, but they are in the sewer system at least once a month. Also, the last construction that they had, which was the wing that went off by Centennial Court, we took a lot of heavy construction traffic. They were moving dirt and gravel and everything came around. Naturally, it was through the one drive there that used to be Wisconsin. And they would come around because they would have to go on Centennial. So it was constant, heavy traffic, there was mud, dirt, jake breaking, and running the stop sign at Texas and Arizona. During this construction time, which will probably be an extended period, Texas has become the main street for people going to Grandview. And since we have the light up at the top, we have way more traffic than we ever had before, because everybody knows if you need to make a left-hand turn onto Fifth Street, you need to use the Texas Light. So we do have concerns, and since there were stipulations that the gentleman had, we'd like to see some of those stipulations really taken into account. We know it's going to happen, but we just don't want it to ruin our neighborhood. I mean, they can do whatever they want, that's their right, and assisted living is fine. I believe my husband and I might be the oldest ones in the neighborhood. We have friends that are younger than us that live in West Hills Village. We like the, the kind of neighborhood feel. As long as they're within that neighborhood feel, the neighborhood will be happy with it. But like, there are concerns that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Kim Schmidt.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk. My name is Kim Schmidt, and I am with Upper Deck Architects, I'm with the architecture firm with this project. Mr. Renicki could not attend today because of a situation that was happening at West Hills Village. I appreciate all the homeowners' contribution to this, and Mr. Renicki wants to know, wants you to know that he will work with you at any point throughout this process. We are just at the beginning stages, so I'm afraid I can't specifically answer your questions, but we will get to them in the future. And at that time, Daryl would like to reach out to you guys and explain to you what we're doing, what's going to happen. But I just wanted to mention a few things, that we are planning this to be a one-story. You saw that picture of the three-story structure looking down into West Hills and then the garage structure. The facility sits back that far at that garage structure, and we're purposely pushing it as close as possible to that three-story structure to allow a lot of green space, especially on that east side. He's very aware that he wants to keep that park-like look. He has the walking paths that, and the landscaping that West Hills is very proud of, and they want to continue that along that east side. Mr. Renicki has talked to the homeowner about the parking that, that submitted the letter, and has talked to them that he will work with them on landscaping and helping to shield that parking as much as possible. West Hills is aware of the parking issue, and so even though these residents will not be using that parking lot basically out front, that is really for visitors and really for staff. And then he's also providing underground parking to help with the parking situation, so he's really trying to work with helping the parking situation. Like the city mentioned, we do have a lot of stipulations to, that to get through, such as sewer, especially drainage. We're very well aware of the drainage issue. And all those stipulations, we will work with the city throughout the process, and we do still have the final plan development to submit, which is at the end of our process, design process, and we'll have a better idea of what we're actually working on. And we'd be able to tell everyone at that time, the city as well as the Planning Commission and the neighbors, what is happening. Like I mentioned, we're just at the beginning of this design process, so I can't answer specific questions. In terms of water pressure, sewer, once again, that's something that we'll have to deal with as we go. If there's any other questions, I can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, I have a couple of questions. I, I see in the stipulations that with the submittal of a final plan development, that we'll get information on fire flows, on sewer, on water. The one question that was brought up regarding parking, at this stage, just in general, with this project, if you build over existing parking, are you, will you lose spots or will there be a net gain?
Yes, they'll be using, losing that parking lot that's just where the assisted living is going. And so we're just now trying to analyze what can be done if, we're not sure what's going to happen, but yes, there will be people some, losing some parking in that spot.
And there's, I saw two more lots in the phased plan. Are those intended to replace some of that parking or?
At this point, it wasn't to replace those, but we are considering that we may have to up those phasing, especially the one on the north by the sign, get that in place to help displace some of the parking.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the board? Karen?
Yes, I, I appreciate the comments from the audience, too. I think she did an excellent job of outlining some of the issues that, that you have to look for, and this is the initial, and I'm going to make a motion to approve that. I, I think that this will be done in a very nice manner because we do have the citizens working with you, and, and as long as that continues, I think that's, that's a plus. So I'll make a motion to approve the item with the stipulations.
Karen made the motion to approve with stipulations. Galen seconded. I do have one more question, I forgot. Freedom Court, that said that, Fletcher had said there would be no access taken off that. There looked to be a little driveway there. Is that an emergency only or?
It's, it's service, so it's just staff use.
Okay.
Depending on what happens with the building, like I said, we don't quite know, but it would be just staff, there'd be no residents, there's no residents on the lower level at all. There's a parking, and then that's actually where the mechanical room will probably go, so there will be no resident traffic up Freedom Court.
Okay. Well, just something, when we come to final, I'd like to see it made clear kind of what the expected, because that's a, you know, dead-end street essentially, and
Correct.
Any traffic will be more than what they see now. Okay, motion on the floor is to approve with stipulations. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18.
Item 18 is the final plan development to construct a fast food restaurant. Property's located just east of Fifth Street on East Duma Road, North Catron Boulevard's Zone General Commercial District, and a planned development. Currently, the property is undeveloped. Property to the west is Pizza Ranch, which has also been through a planned development in the past. Future land use identifies properties suitable for employment. East Duma Road is a collector's street, and you can see arterials, Fifth Street and Catron Boulevard. Proposed site plan, this is a unique property with three street frontages on the north, the east, and the south. Proposed structure is located on this side. There's a drive-up window, sufficient stacking lanes are being provided. The applicant is requesting two exceptions. One, to reduce the minimum required aisle width between the parking spaces on this, on the west side, from 26 feet to 24 feet. Planning Commission and staff have supported this reduction in the past, as it doesn't appear to, to cause an impact on, on circulation or traffic flow. The other requested reduction is a reduction in parking from 30 parking spaces to 28 parking spaces. Basically, those two parking spaces accommodate this little outdoor-covered patio area, so it's going to get, it's not going to be used for portions of the year, and it does just generate the two additional parking spaces. Staff is recommending that the, the reduction be granted. It's a less than 20% request. There are stipulations of approval, which include providing a landscaping plan, showing compliance with the landscaping ordinance upon the middle of a building permit. Let me take you through the rest of the slides. This shows some of the landscaping, but we didn't get a point calculation or, or even identify where some shrubs are supposed to go. Elevations, it's a proposed Taco Bell. Signage needs to be in compliance with the sign code. There is one proposed pole sign on the property. This is looking towards Catron Boulevard to the south and east. Sign is posted on the property. This is looking east along East Duma Road. To the north, this is an apartment complex that the Planning Commission approved in recent times. Some more office uses to, along East Duma Road on the north side to, closer to Fifth Street. And then we can see that there's a Pizza Ranch and an Arby's located to the west of the property. These are sort of the services for this activity center, the, the restaurants and et cetera, and the other uses that, which will support growth in this area and provide the services needed in this area. They have shared access approaches with Pizza Ranch, so that also limits their, their area for putting parkings, so thus the reduction request. Staff is recommending approval of the final plan development with stipulations noted in the staff report, including granting the exceptions to reduce the aisle width and parking two spaces. Are there any questions for staff at this time? And applicant's representative is here, if there are any other questions.
Don't see any questions. I do have a speaker request from Barbara Schneider.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Barbara Schneider, and I'm here representing Marvin Development, which is the developer of the location. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, though, I'd look for a motion on this. Galen has made the motion to approve, Jan seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 19, Patsy. Discussion, aye.
Good morning, Patsy Horton, Long Range Planning Manager. I'm here today in front of you on behalf of the Rapid City Arts Council. They have put together an update to the cultural plan, as identified in our comprehensive plan. It's one of the goals, one of our actual two-to-five-year term goals, and we're right on target because we're two years into the adoption of the comp plan. But they are requesting that the Planning Commission support the application to amend the comp plan to update the cultural plan. So really what I'm requesting is that you make a motion to direct staff to bring forward a comprehensive plan amendment to update the cultural plan.
Karen made the motion to approve, Linda seconded, to direct the staff to bring forward that. One question I have, the, I guess, where in the comp plan would that be added to? There was like a livability section, is that what we're talking?
Actually, it's under chapter number eight, Outstanding Recreational Cultural Opportunities. It's part of principle RC-3, goal RC-3-1, 3.1A, B, C, D, E, and then it also is included in 3.2 as well. So.
All right.
And it is specifically listed in the longer-term actions, the two-to-five-year plan, to update the cultural tourism plan. So.
Okay. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just a follow-up question to what you were asking. What's the timeframe in which you would, this would be brought back once staff, staff starts working with?
They're, they've already gone through the public process to update the plan, so it's really ready to go. So you'll see it within the next submittal cycle, probably the fifth of May.
And the process for updating the comp plan, it would go through the Planning Commission? If the Planning Commission supports it, then it goes on to the City Council for adoption?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Any further questions for Patsy? Seeing none, let's take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have one more item.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you want it to go under staff items.
Your choice.
A couple of years ago, we updated our ordinance on the Tax Increment Review Committee process, and we identified, we, we lost one Planning Commission member, and actually, we recently had the alternate member resign. But I just wanted you to know that the current guidelines still show two Planning Commission members, that's inaccurate. We have been talking for quite some time to adjust those, especially since state law has made some changes. You may or may not see those soon, it might be later, but I just wanted you to know that the current composition of the Tax Increment Review Finance Committee does comply with the existing ordinance, and there is no specific reference to who from the Planning Commission can serve right now. Steve Rollinger is our Planning Commission representative, but I just wanted to keep you up to date on kind of what's going on with the composition of the TIF committee, since we had one person resign. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm the person who resigned. And, and the reason why I did is, is as I've been the alternate on that committee, I, I have not attended any of the meetings, so I haven't provided a lot of value there, I feel. And it, and it tends to, the platform tends to be that I either have a conflict of interest, a potential conflict of interest, or a perceived conflict of interest with most of these TIFs. So I just didn't feel my role on that committee was really valuable, and I felt that, you know, there have been times where they were having trouble reaching quorum, so I just feel that it would be better for somebody to serve in that role. Thanks.
Thank you.
I misspoke. I have one more item. You, you don't see Sandy Smith very often, but she has taken a position in Indiana so that, you know, she's a little closer to home. Oh, wait, she's going to live with her sister. But anyway, in a couple of months or so, hopefully you'll see another long-range planner coming through, maybe with some more economic data or whatever he or she may be assigned to. But I just wanted you to know that we do have one more planner that's going to be missing here shortly.
Thank you, Patsy. Any further items? Karen has one.
I got one, too, when she's done.
Thank you. My, my question really was, it's on the committee reports down there. They said they approved something but amended that item, and I was just curious to what they amended. As for subdivision thing.
Mr. Chair, we had a stipulation on there that said that all improvements had to be in place and no surety could be posted. Prior to this item being heard by council, they had a separate item on the agenda that removed that standing direction to staff, and so we also had them change the stipulation to read as it would for any other preliminary subdivision plan, which is that the improvements be in place or surety be posted. So that was the change.
Okay. Thank you.
With our, just my question is, with the dwindling staff size, population, and there seems to be a lot going on in Rapid City, I just, I'm curious as to what the mayor or council has in terms of replacing some of these people.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So these are standing positions, and, and we, we do have a vacancy that'll be coming up, but we also have the ability to fill those just as fast as we can, so we won't be down in numbers too long, and we're pretty good about turning that around quickly. And you're right, our numbers are up. We haven't seen numbers like this since 2005, 2006, so it's exciting. We have over 60 active development application files right now, and we haven't seen that in many, many years.
Good news for Rapid City. Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Vicki has a follow-up to that, too, just for clarification on Mr. Scholl's question. When you're looking for long-range planners, it's not like you're bringing in inexperienced people, for the most of the part, you're bringing in experienced planners, so there's a huge jumpstart in order to be able to dive in and just understand the tweaking of Rapid City's ordinances, but they can usually just jump in and, and pick up some of that carry load.
Absolutely. We're fortunate that we're allowed to advertise these positions on a nationwide basis, so we get applicants from all over the United States, and several of them come not only with the education, but the experience. So usually they bring something unique to Rapid City, and we've benefited from these individuals coming to town. Fortunately, most folks desire living in the hills or close to the hills, so we get a lot of applicants for these positions as well.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other item, oh, Karen?
No idea.
Let's have a motion to adjourn. Jan made the motion, Linda seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.